In order, please. We have with us tonight Pastor Ross Haversmall from New Hope Alliance Church who will deliver the invocation.
Please stand. Let us pray. Almighty Father, the Creator of the heavens and the earth, the one who is intimately acquainted with our thoughts before we even think them, may this meeting tonight be done in a manner that you would be well pleased. Thank you for those who govern and give leadership in this community. Give to them, Father, insight into their decisions, wisdom, understanding, patience, and forbearance with one another, that we who live under their leadership may live peaceable lives to the glory of the God who loves us, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, you need us to pledge allegiance.
We'll face the flag for the pledge, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have the organization of the board for 2014. First order of business is an election of vice chairman. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Supervisor Chuck DeHaven.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second by Supervisor Hess. Yes. Are there any other nominations or is there a motion to close the nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the nominations for vice chair.
All right, we have a motion to close the nominations by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Is there any discussion? We'll vote on the motion to close. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. We have one nomination. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Vice Chairman DeHaven.
Thank you, sir.
Next is the adoption of the rules of procedure. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They would be the rules of procedure adopted May 28, 2003, amended September 14, 2011. They're Robert's Rules of Order simplified and applied.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven, the second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then the rules of— adoption of the rules of procedure approved. Next is the selection of a parliamentarian. Are there nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move— Mr. Riley continues our parliamentarian.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Are there other nominations or a motion to close?
Motion to close the— move to close the nominations for parliamentarian.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to close the nominations. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion on that motion? Then we'll vote on the motion to close. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The nominations are closed. Now we'll vote on Mr. Riley as parliamentarian. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Selection of time and place for regular meetings. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Meeting time and location, the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at 7:00 PM in the Board of Supervisors' meeting room, County Administration Building, 107 North Kent Street, Winchester, Virginia. Be the time and meeting place for the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for 2014. Should the meeting be canceled due to inclement weather, then it will take place on the following evening.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Hess, second by Supervisor— who did that?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The selection of time and place for regular meetings is set. Chairman's Board and Committee assignments. I did not receive feedback from any of you, so I assume our assignments were good. They are on your iPad. There basically were no changes, but we still do have a few slots for citizens. So get with me if you have a candidate or somebody that you want to be thought about. Otherwise, they stand as on your iPad, same as last year. Next, the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Riley?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab F, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab G, Landfill Oversight Committee Report. Tab H, Public Safety Committee Report.
Questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Supervisor Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved. Tabs F, G, and H. Citizen comments. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
We're going to Board of Supervisors' comments. Are there any? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes. Work session with the Planning Commission and staff on December 6, 2013.
Will the minutes be approved as printed?
All right, we have a motion to approve by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with the Planning Commission and staff, December 6, 2013, are approved. Next, the close session, December 11, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval as submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the close session, December 11, 2013, are approved. Next is the work session with the school board, December 11, 2013.
Will the minutes be approved as presented?
A motion by Supervisor Hess to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the work session with the school board, December 11, 2013, are approved. And finally, the regular meeting, December 11, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, a move for approval, submitted.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, December 11, 2013, are approved. Next, we have a presentation of an energy award by the Virginia Association of Counties.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would introduce Larry Lann, who is the Director of Policy Development for the Virginia Association of Counties, to present the award to you at the podium if you so desire.
Well, good evening. Let me just say it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name is Larry Lann, representing Virginia Association of Counties, of which we are very happy to have Frederick County as a member. Our mission for those in your audience who may not be familiar with our organization, we represent the counties of Virginia. We serve counties in three ways, principally through our advocacy programs and a little thing just began today called the Virginia General Assembly, which of course is going to involve a lot of our times. Second, through our educational programs. And third, through programs that we've developed over the past few years to recognize model programs that have been undertaken at the county level. And one of these, of course, is our Awards of Excellence. And the other is what we call the Go Green Initiative, which was begun in 2007 by the Virginia Municipal League. And a year later, Virginia Association of Counties entered into the partnership with VML, our sister organization, to run this program. And the purpose of the program is really to recognize counties that have taken special steps to achieve improvements in energy efficiency, energy conservation. And that's the principal reason why we have this award and thought it was very important to try to develop a program like that, which recognizes the imperative of energy efficiency and energy conservation. And you are now one of 16 counties that have achieved Go Green recognition, and I want to congratulate you. And thank you very much.
The board of proud to accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Give yourself a hand. Next, the committee appointments. I don't know that we have a candidate yet. Is that correct? So a little help is— would be thank— Next is the Planning Commission of Peckham. Are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, I am interviewing an individual right now and should have words next meeting.
Next is the Community Policy and Management Team. It looks like we're waiting on a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Extension Leadership Council is Sean E.
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Zoning Appeals is Sean E.
Not yet.
Industrial Development Authority of Peckham.
I haven't—I don't have anything at this time.
Planning Commission, Redbud. Supervisor Collins is not here, so we'll pass that. Both of those are his. Historic Resources Advisory Board. It says Redbud, but I'm not so sure that it really is a Redbud. Probably is one of mine, or is it?
I can check on that, sir.
Okay, well, in any regard, I suspect that Supervisor Collins or myself, whichever it is, would gladly entertain a recommendation if somebody knows of a quality person who would be willing to serve. Conservation Easement Authority, that is a county representative. I don't know if anybody's spoken with that chance to. Would you know?
Mr. Chairman, my memory is fading on me a little bit, but I do believe he's been talked to, and I would like to move for his reappointment.
All right, we have a motion to reappoint Ron Clevenger. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ron Clevenger is reappointed to the Conservation Easement Authority. That concludes our committee appointments. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refund. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first request is reference T.W. Wallace Construction Corporation. The county attorney is in receipt of the request in the amount of $2,536.80 related to one vehicle housed in another locality for 2010, 11, and 12. Refund includes personal property taxes and vehicle license fees. And the county attorney notes his consent. And in your action, the board will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Questions for Mr. Riley? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Hess and a second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of a request to refund LaSalle Systems Leasing Incorporated the amount of $3,061.82 for adjustment to business equipment filings for 2013. The company filed in the county, but the contract with the company is in the city of Winchester. This refund includes personal property taxes. County attorney notes his consent, and it's respectfully requested that the board approve the request and in the same form as previously to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Wells. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Next one, Mr. Chairman, is a request to refund BB&amp;T Leasing Corporation the amount of $2,593 for adjustment to business equipment filings for 2013. The leasing company found that assets were sold to the leasee, and the leasee should be billed for 2013. The refund includes personal property taxes for 2013. The county attorney notes his consent. Request for approval by the board is requested along with the supplemental appropriation approval as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Any questions?
Is this something that—we're going to refund this, but it's going to be rebuilt to someone else?
Perhaps the commissioner would like to answer.
Yes, sir, you are correct. And that frequently happens. Sometimes the leasing companies, you know, don't know or haven't told us, but there is offsetting revenue.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? No, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Fisher and a second by Supervisor DeHaven. Any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes yes, and the motion passes.
Last one, Mr. Chairman, is to authorize the treasurer to refund a taxpayer the amount of $3,316.89 for 2011, 12, and 13 real estate taxes based on proper filing of proof of 100% permanent and total disability directly due to military service as required under the Virginia Code, change as a result of the constitutional amendment that took effect in 2011. Taxpayer's name cannot be made public because of the applicable legal requirements as to privacy, but is known to the commissioner, the treasurer, and the county attorney on a confidential basis. It's respectfully requested that the refund be approved, and note that the supplemental appropriation is also approved as indicated in the commissioner's memorandum.
Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess and a second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a resolution and performance agreement for HP Hood LLC. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The resolution that is before you is requesting $1.1 million in installments as stated in the executed performance agreement to the Industrial Development Authority of Frederick County, Virginia, from Frederick County's fund balance to assist in the expanding operation of HP Hood LLC in Frederick County. And be it further resolved that the board does hereby approve and appropriate $500,000 to the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick from the Governor's Opportunity Fund to assist in expanding the operation for HP Hood LLC in Frederick County. As the board will recall, the HP Hood construction expansion project entails $52,69,830 in machinery and equipment additions, $32,559,017 in real property improvements. The project will create 75 new jobs at an average wage of $44,080. The new jobs are in addition to the 425 jobs that already exist. The $1.1 million is paid in four installments. $500,000 in by June 2014, $250,000 by June 2015, $250,000 by June 2016, and the final and fourth payment of $100,000 by June 2017. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Mr. Riley? Or is there a motion on the resolution?
Chairman, a move for approval.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion? I can't help but take this opportunity to say that up and down the valley, as this news broke of this expansion, is quite a feather in our hat. And then the other day, I was pleased, although it's third-hand and I have no personal knowledge, interesting story that Hood had contracted with Northwest Works for the repackaging of some materials, and it was— sound like a very good thing. And so I'm glad to see that they like Frederick County, they're expanding, and I think it's been good for us.
Thank you.
Great.
We'll vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next, Business Friendly Committee, Mr. Riley?
Let me catch up, Mr. Chairman. Hang on one second. At the Board of Supervisors' December 6, 2013 work session, the board discussed the first part of the Phase One recommendations derived from the Business Friendly Committee. Those recommendations were Public Information Officer, the establishment of an Economic Development Authority, and reduction in proffer requirements. Staff is seeking formal board action on the following items based on the consensus reached at the December 6, 2013 work session. Public Information Officer. The Human Resources Committee recommended approval of the creation of the position of Public Information Officer. The creation of this position would make it eligible for funding consideration during the upcoming budget cycle. The board's majority consensus was to create the position with funding to be determined as part of the 2014-15 budget cycle. Staff is seeking board action to affirm the creation of this position.
All right, you've heard the request. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
If I may, although I appreciate all the work that the Business Friendly Committee put into a lot of these recommendations, there are some that I kind of review with some trepidation as it means adding to the bureaucracy. When I look at this particular recommendation, I'm kind of struck by—it appears—and maybe the Human Resources Committee can help me out here. It appears that in order to make this position palatable, saleable, that they've included kind of like everything, including the kitchen sink into this. My concern is that in looking at the duties and the tasks that would be assigned to this position, I'd like to know a couple of things, and that is, A, was a study done of the time that it currently takes existing employees to conduct these tasks? And then totaling all that up, would this position actually be able to do those tasks within the 40-hour work week? Secondly, was a study done that would say if, in fact, we're taking tasks away from existing employees, that the study indicate that those employees, with the amount of time that they would be relieved of in those tasks, does that mean that that employee would still be eligible for a full-time position? Or would those positions need to be reduced to part-time? What I'm trying to do is keep the bureaucracy from being bloated too much, and I don't want to say that this position isn't needed. But again, actually having the good fortune, they might say, of actually doing a couple of these tasks that we're asking this person to do, it's quite time-consuming. And I would just like to know that a study has been done that really looks in-depth of this, because what I'd hate to do is, A, add to the bureaucracy unnecessarily, and B, put someone in a position where they actually cannot accomplish all that is set out in this position classification. So if I could get some assurance that that has happened.
I think it was our intent—I don't want to speak out of turn, Mr. Hess—that if this measure was to move forward within the budget process this coming fiscal year, all of those efforts and justifications need to be analyzed when and at such time we request the appropriation for the position. We realize that at this point, it's early in the process, but we would need to do those things in all conscience to make the board feel comfortable that it is a justifiable position.
But as I understand it here, we're looking to say, yes, put this in your budget process.
Right. But as you well know, putting things in a budget process doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be there at the end.
So I'm hearing you say that during a budget process, all the information that I have concerns about will be addressed?
Yes, sir. I think that's only fair.
Yep. Mr. Lofton, certainly the items you mentioned were discussed, and I'll echo Mr. Riley's comments that no specific study was done, in particular regarding the hours, as you mentioned. I will tell you that a great deal of the discussion centered around providing information to the public and how much methods of communication with the public have changed over time. It's no longer in deference to the Washington—or the Winchester Star reporter in the room. The newspaper is not the only source of information today. The internet and all kinds of other means are sources of information for the public. And I think it's really incumbent on the supervisors and the county government to ensure that we devote proper attention to providing all the information that citizens need.
I understand that. I have no disagreement with that. But again, my concern is actually adding to the bureaucracy and setting this position up to fail, because all that's expected of it cannot be accomplished.
Mr. Chairman? Pause for a minute here. We have a recommendation. Certainly to clarify, the recommendation is appropriate, but I'd like to join in too and form a discussion, but I'd like to do it after a motion and a second for something, and then we'll go into discussion, because I think it's where we are. Is there a motion on the recommendation? Or did I already get that?
We've got that.
Oh, I'm sorry, we are in this.
We are, we have that.
Go ahead. Did you finish?
Yes, sir, I'm finished. Thank you.
My own comments, and I apologize for some regression there on thoughts, but my own comments are that with no criticism of the current staff, people who try to fulfill this function, I really look for a trained professional who understands this and can perform the task. But I would worry if it appears that the job description is too onerous for one individual to—so I think that HR could continue to work on that some, but I fear that we do not have the expertise amongst us or the current staff. And it's not a criticism to do this in a professional way, and that's my interest and support of it. But I think you raised some interesting issues, and we certainly can request HR to committee. I think Supervisor Hess would accommodate.
Certainly.
But I would want—I would not just want somebody to be reassigned. I'd want some assurance that they are professionally trained. And then you don't know if you'll get a winner or not.
Right. And I appreciate that. But again, like I say, actually having the good fortune to be able to actually do some of these things that we're asking that person to do, I know firsthand it takes a lot of time and a lot of resources to accomplish that. And my concern is that we put this person in a position where they can't possibly fulfill all those requirements.
It's a good thought.
Yeah.
This is a 10-year subject at a minimum, and I think what staff is trying to do is be over cautious about the board's commitment to the effort. So I suspect that's what's going on here.
You're right.
Other discussion is as we continue to perfect this before we vote.
Mr. Chairman, I think I mentioned this during the work session, but I still think there should be some discussion with the school board, school system. They have a Public Information Officer, and perhaps this combined position may very well fit the needs. I don't know if it will or not, but I hope—I assume no conversations have taken place there yet, but I guess I'm requesting that if this is approved, that that would happen, at least to check it out.
We will try and exhaust all options, reference to this subject.
So I think what I heard was a concern that perhaps there's more there than an individual could do. Adding to that, another organization might complicate that further, but can be looked at. And then whatever it is that's currently being done that's relieved to current positions, what's the effect of that? what's the effect of that?
Right.
What's the gist of what we need to take a look at?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, with those comments in mind, I can support sending it to the budget process, but that doesn't mean I will support it at the budget process.
Understood.
Other discussion? Well, then we'll vote. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And I assume that HR knows that I've sent it to you for continued work. Got the message? Okay, Mr. Riley, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The establishment of an Economic Development Authority, and this may be a duplication in that we are holding a public hearing on this item later in the agenda, so I will bypass it. The last item under discussion was the reduction in proffer requirements. The Development Impact Model Oversight Committee conducted a reevaluation of the current development impact model, taking into account current economic conditions. The committee discussed the possibility of offering credits for proffer transportation improvements above those typically expected to address transportation impacts. The Development Impact Model Oversight Committee recommended approval of a policy modification to enable credit for transportation. After some discussion, the Board's consensus was to allow the transportation credits for rezonings only, and staff is seeking Board action to affirm this change.
Everybody understand the topic. It was a subject of a work session, but let's make sure we're all on the same page. All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I have a move for approval of the recommendation.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, and a second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, serving on that committee, and Supervisor Hess may want to add his comments also, that we did discuss this in great detail. We have been discussing this for some time. And it appears that we are already able to offer credits for transportation above and beyond what is expected by a developer. And I think this only makes sense to give them credit for that effort. And so that's why the committee decided to recommend this policy modification.
Other discussion? I personally would like to request some way to evaluate and see what it does as it happens. If staff could work on something, I don't see any staff here, but Mr. Riley, I don't want it to be onerous, but sometimes we pass things, but we don't know what it does.
Yes, sir.
And so when it kicks in, it would be nice to have a chance to look at it, not to reject it at that time, but just to see, did it do what we thought it was going to do?
Yes, sir. I think that's on our radar also, that the first project coming forward, we'd like to place great emphasis on it as to its effect.
Okay. Any other discussion? Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, to me, this is getting into a really gray area, and I think we need to really be careful with this one. It's, you know, these off-site impacts that need to be mitigated by developments. Sometimes, you know, VDOT just totally disregards any of that, because it's not the immediate areas. There's a real gray area here for me.
Is there a resolution to that concern?
Not at this time, sir.
Any other discussion?
I think your desire to track the effectiveness of this approach will go a long way toward addressing Supervisor Fisher's issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again Supervisor Hess may want to add some comments. We did actually go through a couple of scenarios from previous developments that took place with transportation improvements beyond what was expected of them. And so I'm sure the staff would be happy to share those to gauge the effectiveness of this policy modification.
Not that I thought about it before, but as the discussion continues today, is it possible, Mr. Riley, to have something like this with a time period on it so that there's notice given that it may not stay around if it doesn't do the right thing? Or is that not wise?
I don't see any problem with a sunset provision on it to be reevaluated in two years, if that's the Board's...
Sure would avoid a situation where somebody wonders why you changed your mind really quickly. It would announce the fact that...
Or try. If you feel comfortable with a proposed amendment to the original motion to allow for a sunset provision on the original motion, we can do that.
What does the Board think about that?
I don't have any problem. I don't think it changes the effect and certainly addresses some of the concerns that have been expressed, so...
That's with a two-year sunset clause?
Just had the thought, I hadn't perfected it. Mr. Riley said it's possible, so that's as far as I've gotten. If you want to take a stab at an amendment to the motion, we'll do it.
I would amend the motion to include a sunset clause of two years, which would give time for staff and the Board to see the impact that this has upon the model and the properties that we receive.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, put a two-year sunset, or a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess. Now, we vote on the amendment. All's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right, then we're back to the original motion since the amendment passed it as amended with the sunset clause. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Mr. Riley.
Thank you. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, just to remind the Board, Phase One recommendations do continue. They will be, number one, signage along major routes entering Frederick County. This recommendation was forwarded to the Transportation Committee and the Economic Development Commission for review of signage placement and messaging respectively. The EDC staff is finalizing a proposed design, which will be shared with the current Industrial Development Authority. Once approved, it will go to the Transportation Committee. Item two is a review and evaluation of the master development plan process. The reevaluation of the current master development plan process has been referred to the Planning Commission and the Development Review and Regulation Committee. And finally, simplification of the landscape ordinance. The reevaluation of the current buffers and landscaping ordinance has been referred to the Planning Commission and the Development Review and Regulations Committee. Once staff receives the final recommendations from the respective committees, it is envisioned these items will be part of a future work session.
Any questions to Mr. Riley as he progresses? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the Human Resources Committee. Supervisor Hess?
The Human Resources Committee met on December 6th. A report that each month, the committee invites a different county department to make a presentation, giving an overview of that department, its functions, organizational structure, personnel, et cetera. In December, Superintendent Jim Whitley gave us an overview of the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center. No Board actions required on this. Also, the Human Resources Director presented an overview of the HR Department's proposed budget for FY 2015. The proposal was reviewed and discussed and referred to the Finance Committee. No Board action is required at this time. And finally, the HR Director presented a recommendation to modify the county's HR policy regarding employment classifications, essentially defining full-time and part-time employees and benefit eligibility. This change is at least partly driven by changes on the horizon due to the Affordable Care Act, which will require the county to offer health care coverage to part-time employees who work, on average, 30 hours or more per week, although that impact will not be felt this year, so we'll explain some changes in a minute. A copy of the existing policy and the recommended change was included in your meeting packet. There's one minor edit to the wording of that recommendation, and that change was noted on a sheet that was distributed to you this evening. Section 16.1 defines full-time employment as a work week of at least 37 and 1/2 hours. Section 16.2 now would define part-time employees as working less than 37 and 1/2 hours. And also, that section would also establish three categories of part-time employment. The committee recommends that the Board approve these changes, and I so move. HR Director Paul Anoff-Singer is present, and either she or I will be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. The change that Supervisor Hess referred to this before you, sure looks to me like purely editorial. Does everybody concur with that? So we have a motion and a second for the change to the personnel policy as adjusted here tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion's approved. That conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Next is the Code and Ordinance Committee.
Can we defer to Mr. Williams to give that report since Mr. Collins is not here?
Agreeable with the Board.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Code and Ordinance Committee met on December 16th and considered multiple items, the first of which actually covers two categories. The first half of it involves changes to the taxation ordinance, which were largely corrective and to address a couple small situations that had come up. The memo under the tab for this item describes each of those items. There's a technical fix regarding retail sales tax, which is, in essence, to confirm with the state code. Again, also a technical fix regarding utility tax to comply with the state code. Repeal of the home heating oil local option tax, because it was repealed under the state code as far as a local tax. A change on the business license tax involving wine wholesalers, to bring them within the ambit of it, we had not previously had a wine wholesaler and now do, and it needed to be covered in there. And then there were also some fixes to the dollar amounts for wine and beer items, wholesalers to make them consistent with the state code. A change on the festival, or well, the itinerant and distressed merchandise vendors, so to speak, the festival vendors, to exempt from the requirement, as it's currently written, if you already have a county business license, you do not need to obtain another one to appear at a festival in the county. This change also exempts those who have licenses from the town of Stevens City or the town of Middletown from the requirement. And then lastly, under the tax changes, a change to allow the commissioner of revenue to obtain subcontractor information from contractors. This allows the commissioner to better track reporting and ensure that all revenue that is supposed to be subject to the business license tax can be taxed. Those are the tax changes. And then the second half of this is a repeal of the massage regulation. And very briefly on that, the ordinance as it exists today was adopted in 1977. The industry's changed markedly since then and is now actually regulated by the state, by the state's Board of Nursing, all of which really makes the existence of the county ordinance to enforce that, I suppose one could say anachronistic or superfluous, one or the other, or both. Those are the changes, the first set of changes, and I think because of the way we've got them designated, Board action on that first set of items is appropriate, and then I can describe the second item. And the Board action it sought tonight is simply authorization to proceed to public hearing on these items.
Mr. Williams, the presentation in iPad is a little jerky. Would you repeat again the items in order that you are bringing from Code and Ordinance for approval to send to public hearing in brief?
Yes, sir. It looks like it is, I think, six changes to the taxation ordinance. One on, well, really, it's three on sales taxes, and then three on business license, and then the repeal of the massage ordinance.
Okay.
And then after the Board acts on those...
How clear are we with everyone?
Clear.
Everyone clear? Okay, is there a motion to act on the recommendation and send these to public hearing?
So move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
If I may, I noticed that we're bringing our fees, especially for wine wholesalers and beer wholesalers. It appears in line with state code. It's like a drastic drop there. I was wondering, how were we able to get away with that so long? Did they just change the code? Or did we...
I did not actually check to see when a change in the state code may have been made. I suspect it was probably made some years ago and just never picked up on, but...
It was never picked up on because we didn't have any wine wholesalers. We had beer wholesalers and that dropped.
The beer one was wrong, yeah. The beer one was $200 and is supposed to be $75. And why beer is 75 and wine is 50, you'd have to ask General Assembly.
Yeah, that was another question, but you're right. We couldn't answer that.
Getting another refund request.
Yes, exactly.
Other discussion? I have a question on the massage parlor's and health clubs. Only what I read in the newspaper, I thought I did, is that the cities had activity in this arena. It seemed to me, over a period of time, I thought I read that they had tweaked. Is this one of those cases where cities can do things that counties can't? Or do you know?
I don't necessarily know off the top of my head that cities have any special additional authority on that. You're correct, Mr. Chairman, the city has had some dealings with this. Part of it, too, is as to those activities that, so to speak, should not be happening at these establishments, or for that matter, any other place, that's just the point, is that the existence of an ordinance like this really doesn't help one way or another. If there are activities that are prohibited under other law, law enforcement is still equally empowered, obviously, to go in and enforce the laws of the Commonwealth as far as, you know, crimes against the morals of the Commonwealth.
Well, that's where I was going with it. If whatever we had, either we had no activity or it served us well, but we need to back off and adopt the state's ordinances, do we have something that adequately, obviously, if what we're talking about is a massage parlor that's not a massage parlor, are we under local ordinance where we need to be if it's not really a massage parlor?
I would submit that local ordinance isn't really necessary there, because it all falls under state criminal law if there's activity taking place that shouldn't be taking place. It's really not in the nature, it's beyond the scope, obviously, of what a massage, massage parlor is probably also a dated term.
If we make the inquiry of the city as to what they may have run into, that they thought, if they were in a similar situation, operating under state code, what fell short for them?
Certainly.
May not get an answer, but it would be nice to take advantage of somebody else's experiences. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to send these to public hearing. Are you ready to vote? All's in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Off to public hearing. Now, Mr. Williams, the second category.
There is a second category. These changes are to the taxation ordinance as well. These are changes to the exemptions for nonprofit organizations. The changes largely fall into four quick categories. And pardon me, I'm trying to see what we have here. The first is... The first regards deleting the provision that would allow the deletion of General Assembly, deleting the provision that would allow the Board to delete General Assembly granted exemptions. The Board obviously does not have the authority outright to overrule a General Assembly exemption, which then ties into the second change, which is, the state code has a provision that allows a locality to require a filing by organizations that have exemptions to show that they should still receive the exemptions. And then, based upon those filings, a locality can then petition, so to speak, the General Assembly to revoke a previous General Assembly granted exemption. That's that change. And then the other change is to the second section of the exemption ordinance, section 155, 154. And this is really just corrective, it's not intended to make a substantive change. For whatever reason, the published code of Frederick County calls out five organizations that have exemptions granted by the Board of Supervisors. What's published is incorrect. It does not encompass all of them. I'm not sure how those ever were decided to be published. And the easiest thing to do is those exemptions that have already been granted are known to be granted, they don't need to be set out in the code. So we would just remove the references from the code, and then, just to make clear that the removal of those references does not mean that they're losing the exemptions, it says that anybody who already had an exemption that was granted still has their exemption. And if I might just go back briefly on the issue of the General Assembly exemptions and Board exemptions, a little history on that. Until 2003, only the General Assembly could grant tax exemptions to organizations... Until 2003, only the General Assembly could grant tax exemptions to organizations. Frequently, the local governing bodies would petition, so to speak, the General Assembly to grant an exemption. So if you look at the history of this board's minutes, we would see that in many instances before 2003, the board adopted a resolution asking that an organization be deemed exempt, but the exemption was not final, so to speak, until the General Assembly then granted it. What happened then was is that the General Assembly got in the business of granting oodles of these exemptions. If you pull out the code of Virginia, there's about 20 pages of eight-point type in two columns dating back to probably 1950 or so, where the General Assembly was granting these exemptions. It is just a, frankly, ridiculously long list. And I think what happened was the General Assembly decided they wanted to get out of that business. They were taking too much time spending time with it and felt that they could just hand that responsibility back over to the localities. So effective in 2003, they said, if a locality wants to exempt an organization from taxes, fine, the localities can do it. And as long as they pass, the locality passes an ordinance, then it's effective. So going forward, it's easy. The problem is, we still have all of those organizations that had General Assembly granted exceptions. What the General Assembly didn't do was say the locality could revoke one of those previously granted General Assembly exceptions. So we've got this awkward two-part process to work with. That's the explanation. I'm sure you probably have questions from it.
Questions of Mr. Williams. What might be a solution to make future boards know what past boards did? Now, when it was in the ordinance, it was incorrect, but that might have been why they did it. Now, you take that away, most board members later would not know who was receiving that. Is that a periodic report that could be adopted?
I am actually, I'm working on that. It's getting close to finality. It's a somewhat complicated process because difference of these exemptions were approved in different ways. But I'm trying to put together an authoritative list of what exemptions are out there and how they were granted. We're also trying to meld together the General Assembly granted ones as well as the board granted ones. And then, some of them were property-specific, some of them were organization-specific. So we have a list, and in some cases, there was an organization that was granted an exemption for a particular piece of property that they've since sold. So the organization has this exemption, it's on the books, but it's only for a particular piece of property. It's meaningless. But I am working on that, and I think we can do a report.
As you try to perfect who it is, could you work with Mr. Riley maybe to have some type of probably annual distribution towards, future boards, about what it is, else they'd never know?
I think so. And the good news, too, is, and I see the commissioner standing up, is if the board ultimately adopts this proposed ordinance, it would require this triennial reporting. So the commissioner would have to have that authoritative list to work from to send those reports returned out to these organizations so that they would know to send them back.
Did you wish to speak or just answer questions?
I can easily provide you with a list annually of all the exemptions on the list, and then notate any that change, just as a reminder to you that, you know, this was exempt these years and is no longer, or whatever you would like. We have that information, and we're working with Mr. Williams on getting an actual list together. But I'd be glad to provide that to you as often as you feel needed.
So theoretically, things that were initiated by a previous board could be done away with by a subsequent board, if I heard Mr. Williams.
It's my understanding, if this change goes through, that that would be something that could be done, yes.
And those that the legislator had passed down, a little bit more complicated, but there's a process to follow.
Now, we do make a concerted effort to be sure that anything that does have an exemption still qualifies. We don't just arbitrarily continue not charging them any tax. We make sure they're still doing the same thing that qualified them in the beginning to have an exemption, you know, charity work or whatever. But I can provide you a list of the existing exemptions.
Further, would it be, is it fair to conclude that everybody that met certain qualifications the board granted tax exemptness to? And I guess that's what I'm wondering, were some picked and some not?
Not in my history that I remember, sir. There haven't been any like that. If they've been, if they have applied, they've usually gotten it because they've usually come through a number of questions that I ask before you all ever see it. For instance, looking at their 990 exempt return, to be sure that the money is not going to pay some figurehead person and is really going to charitable work, and those kind of things are always checked before you even get the application.
Well, then, Mr. Williams, if the commissioner screens and says to the board they meet certain criteria, and the board picks one and doesn't pick another, where is the county?
That's the board's prerogative.
Okay. Then it seems like some kind of periodic report. Otherwise, it becomes an automatic process that, you know, is, you look at less. But if there was any discretion played at all, it seems like you kind of know what somebody did before you.
I think a three-year formal reporting from those organizations would be a reasonable thing to ask. Like I say, in most cases, we do know that they're still doing that, but I think to have something in hand where they have to actually report to us would be an advantage.
Riley, I'd really like to hear from you about, I don't want to go unreasonable here. Are we...
No, I believe the process set out in the proposed ordinance that's going to public hearing will give us a clearer idea of what's out there because we are gathering the information currently. And it also provides us a process to go back to the General Assembly after we have done our due diligence to request, if so desired, to repeal it. So I think we're on the right track.
Okay. Any questions of the commissioner?
Yes, just one. You mentioned that you currently receive information and review those properties that are exempt.
Anything before it ever goes to the board, yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, so you're not talking about existing ones, you're talking when they first make the application?
We don't have any annual reporting ordinance now, but we do look every year before we run our book. We make sure that anything that is not being taxed, that there's a legitimate reason for it, that it has board approval and so forth.
Okay. So in other words, you don't reject, if you would, or cancel the continuation of the exemption on anybody who provides information that may indicate they've changed from a nonprofit to a profit?
Well, we haven't examined any books or anything like that because we don't have an annual reporting.
Okay.
Or a triennial reporting. But we do try to make certain there is such an existing organization out there that is doing those kind of things, yes, sir.
Other questions? Commissioner, go ahead. Supervisor Lofton.
Ms. Murphy, I'm assuming that your list will be clarified as to what the board has exempted and what the General Assembly has exempted?
That's what Mr. Williams is working on now, and we will cooperate with him and work on that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the... I don't believe we took a motion or a second on this one, did we? All right, if we're clear, is there a motion to send it to public hearing or not?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to send it to public hearing.
Send it to public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to send it to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Supervisor has discussion. Hearing, now, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
Concludes the code ordinance report.
All right, next is the Stormwater Subcommittee. Update on new stormwater permit program and ordinance. Information only. Mr. Riley, is there, did you want to make a report?
Yes, sir. You are correct. Mr. Wilder is the author, through his subcommittee, of the new stormwater ordinance that has been mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia through DEQ. And he's going to provide you with a brief overview in anticipation of a public hearing to adopt in March.
We're not asking for public hearing direction tonight.
No, sir. We're mandated to hold it in March, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to thank you for just taking a few minutes tonight to let me give you an update on where we're at with the stormwater program. As many of you all know, this has been a couple-year process working with the state of Virginia. As you all know, state regulation at this point requires local government oversight of stormwater management beginning July the 1st of 2014, which, as you know, that's not very far away now. And on this trek, we've come a long way from one government organization in charge to having a different one now. As of July the 1st of 2013, transfer of power for stormwater and erosion control, transfer from Department of Conservation and Recreation to the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ. As part of that, then, it transferred from the state water, from the soil and water conservation board to the state water control board. Since this point in July, there's been more changes. And I'd love to come forward today and say that we're done with changes, but I know that we're not. But it's very important to note that we, at this point, have to deliver a draft ordinance to DEQ next Wednesday. As part of the draft, the document that I'd sent to you all along with an executive summary basically is a model ordinance that we have reviewed with our committee. As part of recommendation from our stormwater subcommittee, we are combining the erosion control laws with the stormwater laws to have a combined ordinance. So as part of your action later this year, we'll be repealing Chapter 79 of Frederick County Code. Basically, we tucked that ordinance and embedded it into the stormwater ordinance. Long and short of it, we're going to do stormwater very similar to what we do now with our ENS program, except we have more things to do. As part of that, we've got to have new requirements for development to meet higher quality standards for runoff. They have to have inspections, maintenance, there's actually a provision for long-term maintenance. And all of this is being driven by the Clean Water Act, the EPA, to DEQ, and then to local government. Essentially, this program of stormwater permitting has not been very effective in Virginia for some time. It was too big for a state organization to do, so they transferred that authority to the local governments. Many local governments are doing different things to tackle this. We're in a position where we can do it ourselves, we don't have to subcontract it out. We have qualified personnel within the county to review plans, to inspect job sites, and to enforce the law. So what we're doing, and what we're going to be letting DEQ know now, is that we're going to enforce this ordinance. There will be some changes. Fee schedule, one of them, the state adopted a fee schedule, which is part of your packet to review. And as part of their law, they get a piece of the permit fee for governmental oversight. At the end of the day, if we as a local government don't do our job, DEQ can come in and tell us, we either shape up, or they're going to come in and take action. So 28% of the fee that we collect will go to DEQ. There's other fees related to that, but through my analysis of our current permitting, our revenue that we generate now off land disturbance permit fees is going to be increased somewhat, but it's not significant enough that it's going to be, I feel, an impact on development from the fee side. It will also fund our program. State law requires that the fees generated from the land disturbance and the stormwater fees has to fund the department. We have to do this. The state requires that the personnel that's doing this stormwater program have to be certified through a state training program, which we're already doing. There's a lot of minutia, and there's a lot of things we're going to have to inform the developers and engineers to do, but at the end of the day, I think we can educate our local development community on what they've got to change. As part of our subcommittee, we had representatives from construction, from engineering, from environmental fields, and they all understand it's something we have to do. And the best thing to do is get everybody to work together so that they know what they have to do to get a permit. And one thing that this program will do is it brings together several different permitting programs under one umbrella, so that if someone's got a problem on a job site with stormwater or ENS, they don't have to think about, do they call DEQ or Corps of Engineers, or, they're going to call us. And we're going to do our best to solve that problem, and we have the authority to do that. It's through this program. We're also going to do an education and training program here in a couple months. We're going to invite all the public in, all the developers in, tell them, this is what's going to change, this is what you're going to have to do. And I don't want to get into all the little stuff in the ordinance, we could be all night on that. Unfortunately, we're going to have to have that here in a couple of months to go through there. But at this point, what we're submitting is a draft that's been reviewed by the county attorney, by the subcommittee. I'm sure you all hopefully read this a lot over the holidays, probably not, but Mr. Fisher did tell me I had to get it to you early so that you could read it like one paragraph every night or something like that. But it is quite lengthy, but I think it lays out what we have to do. So if you have, I'd love to entertain any questions you may have. There is a couple things that even now, it's interesting, Mr. Lance here, he's been on some of these committees just like I have the last several years, and our heads are still spinning as to the changes. There could still be changes in the legislation. General Assembly started today. There are moves afoot to possibly delay this date of July the 1st down the road. At this point, can't worry about that. At this point, what our goal is, is to get the information to DEQ next week, let them review it, and then get their comments back, and then go forward. And if something changes, then we'll just get on the wave and ride that wave out. So that's kind of where we're at. There's been a lot of work involved. I just wish I could say we're done, but we're not. But the subcommittee's been very good to work with. Even all the local governments are all in the same boat. We're trying to do the best we can with this regulation. Any questions?
Questions? I have a couple, but I don't want to go first. The first one is, I understand that if a new person does a new thing, that there's new rules and fees. Is anybody who doesn't do anything going to have to pay a fee that didn't use to pay a fee?
No. The only time you would have to pay a fee is if you have an existing site and you come in to do a change to that site in addition, then there's provisions within the law that only requires you to meet a certain percentage of change. You don't have to pay or do the whole site. But anybody that's existing and does nothing doesn't have to pay any fee.
Now, the other thing I'd like to just throw out there is, in my opinion, this is a prime example of a public relations officer would be a big help. Mr. Wilder has to play both the expert on the ordinance, and he has to figure out how to get a message out to the people that should go out to in not too much, but just enough to get their attention. And it's not a disrespect to you, but I believe this is where we need such a thing because we need to let some people know something, and they're going to do the best they can. But I don't think that's what he was trained for. He might be quite good at it, but in my mind, this is a prime example of, I can't do it, I can't contact somebody, and if they say, does that affect me? I'm not sure that I can do a good job at that. So I believe this is where we fall short and could help staff out a lot in informing the public. And maybe they don't like it, and maybe they want to talk to Richmond, but at the time they come in for a permit, it's a little late to give them a chance to even know what's going on.
At this point, that's what usually happens, and I'm already getting a lot of calls, people wondering what might be affected in the future. And we're doing our best to make sure they understand, because there is a grandfathering provision, I'm not going to get into that either tonight, but if you're already in the queue, got a plan approved, what happens to me? And I think we're working through that, letting them know what they have to do and what they should do.
Well, if it comes to be that we have a public relations officer, I hope that those of you who find yourself in this situation, take advantage of the opportunity and don't feel it's any kind of threat to what you used to try to do.
Oh, no, none taken. It's a big task, and what we're seeing from the environmental side is trying to educate and tell people what they're supposed to do. It's just, sometimes people are set in their ways and they don't, or they don't want to hear it, and it takes time. But this whole thing is about letting people know what's happening. And the whole reason this law was affected was it wasn't being enforced.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I'd like to thank Joe for a job well done. I know he's been working on it for a long time. There have been changes all along the road, at the last minute changes, and he's handled those very well, and with a smile on his face, and comes back to, I'm on Public Works and have been for some time, and I've watched... have been for some time, and I've watched him struggle with all these things. And I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I think that this is a great example where a public needs to be aware of what's going on. And the force of public opinion towards our legislature goes a long ways. And they're still wrestling with some of these things, and I know the last meeting that I was at down in Richmond just over the weekend, this was a hot topic, and all the other boards in the state of Virginia are pushing to let their representatives know to maybe take a look at this, that the intent is good, but just like you said, might not be able to reach that goal, go in the route that we're going. It's just an awful lot at one time, and maybe we need to slow down, extend the period, and take a closer look at it. So, but a job well done, Joe, to you and your staff. I really appreciate everything you've done.
Well, Mr. Riley and I, as some of you have entertained most of our legislatures in the near past, and I'd say their knowledge level of the subject was not as great as ours, and ours is not much. And they knew that it would be a hot topic, but they, Mr. Riley, you can comment, I don't think they had a depth and breadth at all.
No, we did not.
And so, anyway. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, I just would like to emphasize Mr. Wells's comments, because we can sit here and, great appreciation to Mr. Wilder, because we can sit here and talk about it, but I mean, the changes that the states have from departments transfers to staff transfers to timeline changes to, you name it, they've done it, and our staff reacted above and beyond. So, and it's not over yet.
Other questions? Thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing you in March.
Or April, or whenever they decide.
There'll be a quiz.
All right, next is a public hearing to amend, of an amendment to the 2013-2014 fiscal year budget. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to amend the 1314 fiscal year budget pursuant to Section 15.2. 2502 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, and this is to hold a public to amend the fiscal year 1314 budget to reflect. School construction fund supplemental appropriation the amount of $45.5 million for the replacement of Frederick County Middle School. This project is nearing the point to seek solicitation for construction bids and is the remaining appropriation amount needed for the replacement of Frederick County Middle School project. In attendance is the Superintendent of Frederick County Schools, Dr. Sovine, should you have any questions?
Questions of Mr. Riley or Superintendent Sovine? Then we'll go to public hearing. This is a public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2013-14 budget to reflect school construction fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $45.5 million for replacement of the Frederick County Middle School. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this amendment? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Susan Brinkmeyer. I'm a resident of the Stonewall District, a taxpayer, and the principal of Frederick County Middle School. My own children had the benefit of a quality education in Frederick County schools. They all graduated from James Wood High School, the last one in 2002. The world has changed a lot since 2002, and the challenges of the workplace and the schoolhouse continue to change as new technologies and ideas become the norm. To meet those challenges, we must prepare our students to work collaboratively, think critically, and explore new ideas. Many of the educational methods, strategies, and facilities that served us well in the past no longer provide our students with the competitive advantages that they need. Despite the limitations of our existing building, we have worked hard to create a positive learning environment at Frederick County Middle School and to prepare our students for the future. And now we have an exciting opportunity to build a school specifically designed to meet the needs of students today and for years to come. The design grew from a student-first perspective, with input from students, from teachers, and from community members. It's designed to meet the physical, academic, and social needs of middle school students, and it will allow for differentiation, flexibility, and collaboration. Security measures are built into the design to support a safe and orderly environment to support learning. And the new Frederick County Middle School will be a source of pride, pride for students, staff, and citizens. As a community center, it will bring needed resources and opportunities to the Gainesboro community. The schematic design shared with the faculty in early December generated lots of discussion, several questions, and a growing sense of excitement. One teacher shared with me during a team meeting, this is the way teaching is supposed to be, all about what students need. Another told me this design re-energized her and reminded her of why she entered the profession. We all recognize the investment this new school represents and the importance of doing it right. And we're already working within our school to plan professional development to help teachers effectively transition into new ways of teaching. Our school motto is, "Learning today, leading tomorrow." I ask that you consider both the learning needs and the leadership potential of our students. Please invest in their future and the future of our community by appropriating the funds needed to construct our new Frederick County Middle School. Thank you.
Anyone else? My apologies, Dr. Sovine. If I'd have thought you wanted to speak, I would have let you down before the public hearing.
No apologies necessary. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Riley, members of the board. I'm David Sovine, Frederick County Schools Superintendent. I want to take just a few moments to review some of the work that has been done leading up to the school board's request that's before you this evening regarding the appropriation of $45.5 million for the construction of the replacement Frederick County Middle School. As you know, the current Frederick County Middle School opened in 1965, is in need of facility modernization in order to address issues such as safety and security, aging infrastructure, and outdated design, and need to provide an opportunity for students and staff to better benefit from the advantages of modern technology. This project has been on the school division's capital improvement plan for many years, as you well know. It will not only serve our students well, but will also serve our county citizens very well, and will utilize this facility in a variety of functions for community events. The new school will be constructed on 38 acres adjacent to current Gainesboro Elementary School, and will have a program capacity of approximately 900 students. It will total approximately 180 square feet, and is scheduled to open in the fall of 2016. The design for the new Frederick County Middle School was developed following an extensive public engagement process that involved key stakeholder groups, including students, parents, teachers, school administrators, and members of the public. Information regarding the design of this school has been shared through the school division's website, in school newsletters, and on the Facebook page of Frederick County. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive on this project. The new Frederick County Middle School is designed to be student-focused and to foster the academic, physical, and social development of our students. The non-learning communities within the school will be highly adaptable, which will allow students and teachers to alter their environments in order to meet the teaching and learning needs of their students. A variety of proven strategies regarding energy savings and environmental sustainability have been integrated into the design of the school in order to increase energy efficiency and provide operational savings. Investing in these initiatives will result in annual savings that will compound over the life of this facility. Finally, I want to thank each of you, board members, for working collaboratively with our school board on this important project. We appreciate your support, the feedback that you've provided throughout the land acquisition, the design process, and the funds you've previously appropriated to allow us to acquire the property for this school and proceed with the design work. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to request that you approve the $45.5 million budget adjustment to the school construction fund that's before you this evening to allow us to proceed with the construction and welcome the students to Frederick County Middle School beginning in the school year of 2016-17. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions to Dr. Sovine as the demand? Then are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for approval of the resolution as it's presented in our agenda.
Are we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
You speak.
I spoke first, but.
Supervisor Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is an ordinance to amend the ordinance that created the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an ordinance to amend the ordinance creating the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia, adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Frederick County, Virginia on October 24, 1967. To name two, number one, change the name of the authority from the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia, to the Economic Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia pursuant to the provisions of Section 15.24903(c) of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. And number two, to state that the authority shall continue to have all the powers set forth in Chapter 49, Title 15.2 of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Questions of Mr. Riley? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Riley, I'm assuming that this might be a multi-step process because we had talked about changing the name, but also the makeup of the board?
It is, Mr. Lofton. This is the first step. Working with the Economic Development Commission staff will basically be running parallel operations as we transition from one to the other and to include the new bylaws and the setup for the new authority.
And we've.
To include the appointments.
And we've already submitted our request to the General Assembly for.
Board member.
Yes, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riley, procedurally, would one assume that if the ordinance passes, the name changes immediately, because there's no date here of effectiveness?
It's immediate. We are now an economic development authority once you conduct the public hearing.
Then going back to Supervisor Lofton's issue of multi-step process, aren't we in no man's land until we do those other steps?
Well, you have a current board sitting on the Industrial Development Authority, and as you replace them with the Economic Development Authority title, you will move through that process.
Okay, if it meets muster, I'm okay. I just was querying.
Your paralleling is basically.
Because you changed the name, I guess you didn't create a new thing.
Right.
Any other questions? If not, then we'll conduct a public hearing on an ordinance to amend the change, the name of the Industrial Development Authority from Industrial Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia, to the Economic Development Authority of the County of Frederick, and to state that the authority shall continue to have all the powers set forth in Chapter 49 of Title 15.2 of the Code of Virginia. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance to change the name? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Let's pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be if we adopt the ordinance.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Are there any board liaison reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to citizen comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll close citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any board of supervisors' comments?
I just have one. Mr. Riley, I fret over things sometimes, since none of us knew anything about Supervisor Collins, would you try to see if he's okay?
Yes, sir. I certainly will.
Know if he's okay, but we're worried that he was expected to be here and not here. All is well.
Yes, sir, I will check on that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, some of the recommendations, and I don't want to sound negative, but the economic times that we've been through, businesses have been cutting back and laying people off and being very conservative. Some of these recommendations that we see coming are very interesting to me because they indicate an increase in costs, reduction in revenue in some cases, and I'm curious as to how all this is going to take place, and just want to be, in my mind, be cautious about how we proceed, and if the economy doesn't start coming back, I just find some of the recommendations being rather interesting to me and challenging, and I hope we don't get ahead of the curve on revenue over expenses. Thank you.
Any other supervisor comments?
Chairman, may I adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Meeting adjourned.